Good evening. We've met in closed session. We have a call. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll start with a motion to approve the minutes from the May 15 business and closed meeting and the June 5 special meeting and the June 5 close meeting.
I move to approve the minutes for those meetings as submitted. A second motion.
Mike Devport.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Adam.
Rick Pavano. Minutes.
Approving the minutes.
I approve.
Dan Reddick.
Put you on the spot.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Nancy Kupka.
Aye. Thank you. They carry. First, we're going to move on to our first reception of visitors. The meeting agenda includes two opportunities for comments from the audience. The first reception is intended for audience members to address the board about any agenda item on which the board will vote. Does anybody wish to address the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to the recommendations and reports of the superintendent, legal update.
We're going to do some seat changing here and invite our team visitors from the Francic Rattleit to take hold here. And I'm going to have them do themselves and get started here. So I'm going to start with Shelley.
So I've met some of you. I am Shelley Anderson. I am one of the attorneys that works for the district at Francic Rattleit. And Darcy and I, I heard, introduce yourself as well. We're going to pass around. Do you have some as well?
I do.
Okay. We have a handbook that we put together whenever there is a board election. I'm updating it from time to time, so we want to make sure that everyone here got a copy of that. I think Hank also has a copy electronically, for those of you who might want it in that format. Whenever we have new board elections, we always offer to come out and meet those board members who we have not had an opportunity to meet before, answer any questions you might have about kind of what's going on in the law as it relates to the school district that we can answer, you know, in open sessions, just general legal information. I handle a lot of your personnel work with both, working a lot with Pete and with Hank, and do services for the district from time to time that you may need them for your staff. And I will let Darcy explain kind of what she does.
Thanks, Shelley. My name is Darcy Crea, and I have been working with Downers Grove 99 for 18 years. Todd Faulkner is a name Todd, Shelley and I all work on Downers Grove 99 matters. So it's, we go back a long way. We could regale you with stories, but we will refrain. They, most of the work that I do with the district is working with Hank and with Scott on special ed and student matters. And it really, it's a real honor to represent you for all these years. And so the booklet in front of you is just a handbook that we update, like Shelley said, every couple of years when there's new board elections. We represent the board, which is always a good reminder. Even though our day-to-day work is primarily with the administration and we develop very close relationships with them over many years, the board is our client. And so that's something that bears a good discussion and reminder whenever we come out and meet with our clients. So we thought we would take questions. If any of you have any questions of us or about our background or about the firm or what we do, we'd be happy to take those. Don't be shy.
We've been pretty happy with your services since I've been on the board, so, yes.
Good to hear that.
Well, and if you're not, you just have to pick up the phone and let us know, right? Well, I would just add to that. I mean, we do pick up the phone a lot, you guys, and we really appreciate how quickly you get back to us.
We represent almost 100 school districts in Illinois and very large and very small. And we're both, Shelley and I, passionate about what we do. We like, we like to make connections between our clients, so that's something that we enjoy doing so that we don't recreate the wheel. Over the years, you've given us some interesting situations to work on, I will say that. We've learned a lot. And in working with you, we've learned in a way that we can represent and guide and counsel our other clients too. So I want to thank you for that. And the relationships that we've had for many years are very special to us.
And for the new board members, you probably won't see us a lot. I mean, if you do see us, there's usually a problem if you have to see one of us. But we do offer different programs throughout the course of the year, conferences, both in-person that we have that kind of covers the broad spectrum of everything you might want to know about what's going on in school law, as well as various webinars that we have that Hank always gets information on, and he can pass along to everybody to make sure that you're aware of what's going on if you want to avail yourselves of that.
Are there any things that, in terms of how we conduct ourselves or conduct our business, that in your 18 years you've gone, I wish they wouldn't have done that, or you wish we would have done something differently?
Nothing that's jumping out at me in terms of anything that I've had experience with, with the district. I think that you, you know, obviously had a superintendent for a long period of time, now kind of transitioning with Hank with the new superintendent. And I think that has, really from our perspective, we don't always see it go so smoothly. At least from what we've seen, it seems to be a really good transition with the whole team working well together. So that's a testament to how they're all working, which is, which is really great.
That's good and timely feedback. Thank you.
Downers Grove 99 has always been very child-centered, student-centered. And so it pairs, I think, well with our practice and our philosophy. And we will dive in when we're needed. And we dive in really in a way to allow you to serve students. And we try to, you know, we do our best to keep the legal work and handle it succinctly as best we can professionally, always with an eye towards serving your community, because we know that's your charge, and so it becomes ours. And I think that's something that we take very seriously. We also are very proactive. Downers Grove 99 has always allowed us to use our proactive approach instead of reactive. And so I would say that's another thing that really rings true for this district throughout all these years, is that we don't get the call in the back end when everything is on fire. We tend to get the call at the front end where we can really be a partner with you and talk about what the issues are and what the different options are. And that's something that we don't say to all clients, but it's something that really sticks out, I think, for us in 99, and it's something we value very much. You've got great administration. It's just their pleasure to work with, and you should be very proud of the work that they do for your students.
And we are.
You should be. They're great.
I want to just build on just something that Darcy said that I know we've talked about with our team before, that, well, first of all, I was excited when I came here to learn that Francic was your lead attorneys here. And because I had a relationship working with them in another district, well, two other districts. And I have always felt that as a firm, they make it clear they represent the board, and as Darcy said, thereby represent the students. I always feel like when I call them, I'm going to hear from a group of folks that are going to tell us what to do, what's best for our kids. They're not interested in protecting administrators. They're not interested in protecting staff members. They're interested in representing the board and representing the students of our community. Even if sometimes that means we don't hear the news we want to hear, we hear what's the right thing to do, what's the legal thing to do, and what's right for kids to do. And it's always good that you can call up and get that kind of advice.
Usually the communicator would be through Dr. Kupka. So if there's any questions that come up or, you know, anything, there's no question it's too small. Just all you have to do, usually we funnel that through the board president, and we'd be happy to help you in any way. So.
Thank you. You've held my hand more than once.
Anything else?
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
It's nice to put a face with a name.
Thank you.
Best wishes.
Likewise.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Parent-teacher advisory committee?
I'm going to turn this over to Scott, who's following up on the initial presentation that came in May, right? And he surveyed attendees and is reporting back out on what he learned.
Yeah. So just to give you kind of the overview again of the document that I prepared, and you see up here, we had 40 parents or guardians attend our meeting, which was May 10 at Downers South in the library. And then we put out a survey that we got 24 respondents. And so if you look at the results, I kind of wanted to just kind of highlight a few things. Obviously, the blue is the high value. So the parents and guardians felt like the overall event was really strong. The topics that were presented were really strong. The data, obviously, you can see changed a little bit. It wasn't as strong as the other ones. But what was interesting is all these pieces connected to what the parents provided in more anecdotal or narrative. And they talked about the data where they wanted actually more data than what we presented to them, and they wanted the data more focused and kind of drilled down into different areas. So for example, one area that came up was hospitalizations. And they wanted to know more detail about how hospitalizations between, whether it was medical or whether it was mental health, and even drilled down even farther between demographics of students and things like that. So, you know, I captured a few of their comments and themes that surfaced. What I thought was really cool from hearing the parents and guardians from that event is they really enjoyed, one, they said they wanted more of these meetings. Two, they really enjoyed having direct input onto our programming. But even before that, they really actually enjoyed listening to the different programming and support that we do offer. And it was, it was interesting just even talking with parents at that night where afterwards where they kind of just said, you know, we know you do a lot, but we're impressed with all that you do. And so, you know, we kind of took you, took them through the agenda of not just saying, well, here's our discipline data. We really talked about it from a standpoint of our interventions and supports as well. So, I mean, it was a great, successful evening, and that's kind of the data that I wanted to share with you. I don't know if there's, I know Nancy was obviously there, you know, but it was really a good event. And we appreciated the feedback, and we're going to really look at that and redevelop kind of what we're going to do for next year with that in terms of the data. And we may even talk about another event rather than just one. So. Any questions on it?
I would just add that I thought that the data shared was some of the, I just thought it was very simple and understandable, and I really appreciated it. So.
Okay. Thank you.
And I did learn that we can approve, we can, as a board, designate those board members and attendants to approve the minutes, which would be me. So we'll come back to that. 2017-18 calendar?
All right, 2017-18 calendar. So I think this is the final time we're going to talk about next year's calendar. It might be the last chance we have to talk about it. So we've wrapped up all of our conversation around late starts. If you remember at the last meeting, we asked for the AOK to go talk to the regional office of education in the state of Illinois about our plan and make sure that it met all of the state requirements. In that conversation, they recommended that we move from 9:30 to 9:20 on our late start days, thus making our late start days count as full attendance days by the state of Illinois. So later on tonight, you're going to have two action items. One is to approve the calendar as you see it presented up here, which really shows no late start days, because this is the calendar that's approved by the state, and all of our late start days are technically, by the state requirements, full attendance days. And then we'll have a second item that is to approve the days that will be late start days, which is every Monday that we're in attendance beginning after September, or on September 11, and through the rest of the school year, is a separate action item, thereby approving the official state calendar as you see it here, and then a second calendar that shows the days that are late starts. There's one additional late start day beyond Mondays, which is the day after parent-teacher conferences. We start a little later that day to give teachers a little more turnaround because they're here so late the night before. And then there's a one amended day, which is April 10, which is the state SAT test day. And it's indicated as an early release day, because when the testing period is done, we release students, staff stay through their contractual day. So with that being said, any questions on the amendments that are there?
So Hank, with the time changing from 9:30 to 9:20 and now counting as a full day, did that have any impact on the end-of-year date?
No, because the way that the accounting worked is that we banked minutes to allow us to arrive later. It doesn't change the number of actual attendance days.
So minimal impact besides that 10 minutes on a Monday?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we're not going to have any bus problems with that?
Nope. We've run it past the bus company, had multiple conversations. We also talked to food service to make sure that students that are arriving for breakfast, we'd have enough time to get all of that taken care of. So every, all of our services that take place before school, we've talked through those.
There's a couple of extra bus runs or something.
Yeah. One of the pieces, actually, last time, one of the pieces of feedback that we received from parents was concerns around days that were late starts, that were bad weather, and the students that lived within the mile and a half walking distance. And what we heard from those, from many parents was that on late start days, when it looks like there's going to be bad weather, they might hang back and go to work late so that they can get students to school without them walking through bad weather. And increasing the frequency of late start days increases, would increase the frequency of the chance of that happening. So they raised the idea of, could we arrange for some kind of a bus, an additional stop kind of halfway between that, kind of the busing boundary in the school? So we've worked with the bus company on Mondays to add a stop kind of halfway in between. And anybody who's there will pick up and bring on in and get them to school.
Thank you for that accommodation. I think that's fantastic. You're responsive. Obviously helps some parents out, so.
Yeah. Hopefully that meets that need.
Just one question. Is May 28, is that a holiday? So it's, it's after the last day of school, but the emergency days are 29th, 30th, and 31st. I'm just wondering why.
28 is Memorial Day?
It's Memorial Day.
Yeah.
Yeah, it appears as a holiday in case we have to put the emergency days into effect.
Got it.
Yeah. Even though everybody hopefully is, we have another winter like this year.
Anything else? Food service?
All right, I'm going to turn this over to.
Tony's got the actual exhibit that we're going to ask you to authorize us to sign. As you all pretty much know, the, we went to a new five-year contract with Chartwell's. This is our first year with them. And part of that five-year agreement is really, I think, three years of solid, we expect them at least three years, the last two years. We may have more negotiation depending on how they're, they're doing. And, but we expect at least three solid years out of this group, and we don't want to change too often. It's a very difficult process, not only for us, but for students, but also for just the staffing that they use, because as many of the individuals have to change their employers. So the contract, though, did call for CPI limits on, not our revenue stream, what we're used to working with, but actually just the CPIU, 0.7%. So you can see that reflected here in the agreement, the increase in the rate for the daily meals will be 0.7. They did have a drop in utilization, about 200 kids a day at the first semester, started to regain some of that. Now, we don't know if that's, there's a couple of things that happened. Number one, just Chartwell's changing. But we also raised the price for the meals from $2.65 to $3. So we really don't know the impact, what really caused that. And they are starting to rebuild some of those numbers, or they did by the end of the year. They may use different tactics next year, particularly if we have delayed start, where they're going to may do some quick grab-and-go type things. So we're going to work with them and see what we can do to just make it easier for them to get food to the kids. I still believe that the lines, and we know that the lines are still an issue at both schools with, with kids, you know, it's starting to form more of a habit of bringing their lunch just because they have time to sit down and eat it, more time to sit down rather than waiting through a line. But we are looking for different, you know, different options with, with them. But we would just like you to approve this when we get to the action section. They've already approved it on their side, so we just need to get it in place as soon as possible.
Questions or concerns? I will add, I've heard multiple unsolicited discussions among North and South students about the quality of the food, and it has improved immensely.
Oh, good. That's good to hear.
The fact that they're even talking about it.
And Reese visits, now won't say regularly, but visits the lunch lines and is closer to the program. And I think she thinks they're doing a very good job trying to be innovative too, so.
Okay. Title one?
Channel my inner Gina Zaccardi, who is representing us at the Avid conference right now.
Yes, Gina.
So the district Title I plan typically doesn't come up every year, but due to changes in ESSA, even though we authorized a Title I plan last year, are required to reauthorize this year under the new requirements. However, we don't know, due to budgeting at the federal level, how much or if we will receive Title I funding. However, in the past, it's ranged around $300,000 per year. Title I is there to meet the needs of our most at-risk students. As part of this year's plan, we had to more comprehensively list out our supportive programming, even if it isn't supporting traditionally Title I students. So we provided for you kind of a plan summary in the attachments today that outline many of the programs that we have in place, which we've brought to you over the course of the year. Many of these have come before the board this year or in years past. There is a much more comprehensive plan in there as well. However, to support it, we just need board approval, which will come up for action later in tonight's meeting. I will take any questions and answer them to the best of my ability until I run out of ability, and then I will record them for Gina.
Any questions? Okay, let's try to keep the excitement down. Let's move on to the community.
Yeah.
It's okay. Community, it's all because we're all so well-prepared. Community engagement update?
So we forwarded the board a report in advance of tonight that is put together. I'm going to bring Jill in on this part of the conversation. It's really the summary of the work done this spring with many community advisory meetings. And it outlines what our next steps are going forward. As I indicated in the highlights, really began on page six with the findings of the survey. At this point, I'm going to turn over to Jill to talk a little bit about what we found and what we'll do going forward. I did see Nancy, you grabbed the year in review.
How, you know, I got this at home. How cool is that?
Well, thank you.
I would love to play for them, Mr. Malkwist. Yeah. We got the nicest message I have ever heard from a gentleman in his 80s who called us to tell us in his 60 years of living in Downers Grove, this is the best piece of mail he's ever received from any community organization. It was the nicest message you could have got.
Very kind and encouraging. So, yes. The point of that was just to be short and sweet and really recap the whole year so that people would, would actually read it. So that was sent out a couple of weeks ago. So I'm glad that you received it.
That's great. I usually do things as that. I actually, I read it. I mean, not just because I'm a 99. I said, wow, this is great. So thank you.
Good. Well, good. So there'll be even more printed things that will come out in the fall in relation to the community engagement. So this is helping to establish that relationship too, that we haven't done print in a while. But with Hank coming on board, he was very determined to do something in print and mail it to all of our communities. So I'm glad that we, we did that this year.
Imagine that, the tech guy who was fighting for the paper.
Right, right.
Surprise.
Exactly. Yes. So I don't know if you have had a chance to read through the report, but there is a summary of the survey that we took from people. About 72 people came to the meetings, evenly divided between North and South, and about half of those people completed a survey. You know, I think just some of, a couple of the highlights of this were, was a question, were you aware that the district would be paying off facility bonds? And, you know, only 32% said yes. So that shows us that that's a communication gap, something that we need to really focus on in the fall to let people know.
Which we did include in the year in review, a little note about that.
We did.
To just try to bring more attention to it.
And that there would be meetings in the fall as well. So, on the most part, I would say that people are pretty supportive of all of the things that we highlighted for them during the tours. So there is a little bit of a split. Some of the South people who attended that meeting were more supportive of the South auditorium, for example, and vice versa. But I think that's just because, you know, you're more inclined to go to the school that you know about. So, you know, in preparation for the fall, we're, we're going to have eight meetings, actually, surrounding the facility plan. So we'll have two meetings at South and two meetings at North and kind of stagger those so that it's not just one week at North and one week at South, just so that if somebody's out of town, that they can attend a meeting either on a Thursday night or a Saturday morning. So it's a pretty full schedule next year. But do you have any questions about the report? Anything in there? Anything surprising or no?
Yeah. On 14, I'm just trying to draw conclusions, noting that we only have 36 responses. So, you know, it's limited data set. But it appears from at least the 36 individuals who responded that the outdoor renovations were the lowest priority. Is that a fair conclusion?
I would say yes.
Yes.
And that's what we heard.
And air conditioning was probably the highest priority?
I would say the ones that we see kind of running close are safety and security, and then climate and environment run pretty close. It's hard to separate that from then the instructional commons, because the instructional commons ties so closely into the kids' safety and experience and learning environment. I think that those three, when we get in front of people and explain them, tend to trend very strongly. But we continue to hear from the folks that sit through and hear the details of all the plans, that we should go for all, that this is what our schools need, that we've accurately identified school needs. We hear that from our staff, from, from everybody we've gotten in front of. We have yet to hear what about this? You know, it's just very supportive that, and a couple of folks that, a few critical voices here and there, but not overwhelming. And usually it's around a specific part of the project rather than it as a whole.
One of the, one of the clear feedback was having more financial data, just because, yeah, that sounds great. Yeah, we should do that. We should do that. We should do that. We should do that. Oh, what does it cost?
Right.
And how is it going to impact my tax bill? Which obviously is probably the most important part of the equation. How are we going to address educating the public about cost going forward in the fall meetings?
Yeah, it's, it's still hypothetical until the board takes action on whatever question they want to call. But we're, we're prepared. We've got, we're pretty comfortable with the, now the forecasts we've received from White, our architects, on the two different plans. We've culled through those. We're pretty confident with the, well, we're, we're very confident now with the numbers we've received from them. So we're prepared to come forward with more clear financial data than we were able to in the spring as we were finalizing those numbers.
Sure.
So I would anticipate any conversations that we have in the fall, we'll be able to say, this is what the all-in plan would cost an increase in taxes to the average household. This is what Plan B would be as an impact. And this is what the amount would roll off in taxes of an average household, should we not move forward with reissuing bonds. So we're, we're pretty comfortable now with those numbers. Where in the spring, we were still, you know, with changes in the market and construction prices and inflation and interest rates, you know, there was a lot in influx. But now, as we get closer to that date, it gets easier to project, so.
And we'll include it in all of our communications. So we're sending a newsletter out to all households. And so it will be incorporated in that. We've talked about doing opinion articles to submit to the media, punged by Mark, that will go a long way to educating people what we're, what our financial position is.
Is the task force, is that different than the community advisory committee?
Yeah, the community advisory committee advises the superintendent's office on, on any variety of issues that we talked about. variety of issues that we talked about. Late starts, GPA, class rank, those kinds of things, as well as, you know, obviously a major focus of our work right now is master facilities. The Citizens Task Force, what their challenge will be to do is to ensure that anything that's coming out of the district is clear, is concise, is unbiased, is understandable, that there's no marketing or spin on it, that, and that it's understandable and receivable to the community. And that we're making sure that that, that type of message is being delivered in the spots that need to hear it, whether they're going to naturally be in support or not of anything that could increase taxes. We have a responsibility to educate our community, and that Citizens Task Force will help us to do that in the best way possible. So, that's really their charge, is to look at how we are communicating to the public. It's also then to provide, as we do that work, feedback back to the board about what we have learned through polling the community and sharing this information with a variety of different audiences, so the board can get a recommendation ultimately from the administration of what the community thinks around this idea. So, they kind of have a two-pronged set of responsibilities.
Then, based on the monthly overview, with the task force making its recommendation to you in December, are you thinking of the January or February for the board to discuss?
The board has to take action at the latest December if they're going to put something on the ballot in the spring.
Spring of '18?
Next year. Yeah.
Oh, is that, is that something we're considering? Spring of '18, not spring of '19?
No, we would need to, if we're going to reauthorize the bonds without them coming off of the tax rule, we'd have to take action either in the spring or the fall of '18.
Okay, okay.
So, come November, we'll start to give the board general feedback of what we're hearing, make sure that you don't have any additional questions, and then, and hopefully by December, we'll have a December workshop, and then in December, at the board meeting, hopefully we're prepared to know, are we doing something in the spring? Are we doing something in the fall? Are we not doing something at all? You know, based on what we learned from our community in the fall.
Okay.
So, we're recruiting for the Citizen Task Force now. So, that's the link that we shared with all of you, looking for a good cross-section of the community, different ages, parents, not parents, you know, future parents. So, if you know of people who would make, want to contribute, that would be nice to know.
And we're looking equally for people that might naturally lean to supporting such an idea, and for people who might naturally be critical of such an idea, because, like I said, we want to be able to accurately and clearly, in an unbiased fashion, inform our community about what the needs are and what it looks like at each stage along the way.
Anything else? For you?
I believe we have two requests. Yep, two submitted, two filled. That didn't change since the other day.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, is there any item, any of the, any member of the board would like to remove for further discussion? Hearing none, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. The personnel report, appointments administered, appointment certified, transfer of position classified. The personnel report, resignation certified, resignation classified. The personnel report, salary and benefits wage increase classified, wage increase administrative. The financial pages, the approval of prevailing wage resolution. Resolution authorizing depositories, depositories and check signers. Approval of property and liability insurance renewals. Resolution of nomination for membership of the Downers Grove Plan Commission and approval of food service management company renewal.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented in red.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much. Recommendations for action. Award of bid, bulk purchasing, CMG Supplies.
I'll turn this over to Jim.
Jim.
Okay, thanks. Got a couple annual tonight with purchasing and copy paper. So, first one, custodial maintenance grounds supplies. We had 11 vendors, a couple new vendors, which was nice to see, actually, one of them, one part of the bid. So, we're happy to see a couple new people come to the bid opening. Been doing this about 10 years now, and we've had great success, great competition. We add supplies on each year for things that we need, so it's expanded. So, we're very happy with each year, how much that we're going out for bids and what's coming in. What we noticed this year, when I sent to the schools, is a lot lower totals that came back. So, when I talked to the schools, we didn't need as much salt, we didn't need as much chemicals, we didn't need as much other cleaning supplies. So, that tells me good things, that we're using them very wisely. There's no theft at all in our buildings. All our products are green, and like the 3M products, they just go a long way. So, I'm very impressed on how the schools are using what we're getting each year. So, using a lot of that overstock this year, so we're about $37,000 less than last year, which is good news. We might see a little bump next year, but it's good to go into this next coming year a little less. So, with that said, we are asking the Board of Education to approve custodial maintenance supplies contract for the vendors that are listed for the aggregate amount of $78,752.
Good news.
Yes.
I'm going to move that the board approve the award of contract for custodial maintenance and ground supplies for 2017 to the vendors as presented in the aggregate amount of $78,752.
I'll second.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Nancy Cupca.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Award of bid, student novels.
This one is mine. It's a new item for us, and we hope to keep doing it continually going forward. Typically, we don't bid out textbooks because they're made by individual publishers, and they're exempt, more or less, from the, from the law. But, and it was, it's, we've also allowed each of the schools to kind of choose and select whatever vendor they get them from, and they're an important part of our curriculum with all students receiving a number of textbooks, depending on what class and what teacher they have. And it varies quite a bit. We have about 116 different titles that we use at all those levels. So, we decided, though, if we could put them together and bid, this isn't even the entire amount, there's going to be probably another, much smaller bid for another grouping for, in the fall for second semester. Some books have not yet been determined which ones, specifics ones will be used and accounts for those books. So, there was actually a pretty good response to the bid. Six vendors, the first one, the lowest was EMC, perhaps not really an Einstein group. They only gave us a bid on 12 items that fit into their warehouse. So, we weren't able to use them, and we checked, the 12 prices weren't even lower than the ones that we had in the other. Mack and Book Company did have some issues with their certification, that they don't have some of the policies in place as required of a formal bid, and so, and actually, honestly, we, the Follett was, I went to vendor reviews in the past to some extent, but they included the alternate that we really need, at least for this transition year, to go to this process. It's, we are going to be able to give them class lists and even teacher lists, and in the case of Follett, they're going to package the books in boxes that are specific to that teacher and classroom, which is a big process that we're allowing, you know, they're going to do, which takes, takes process off of our hands, and that's how it's been in the past. It's been done that way historically, and so we didn't want to throw a curve at our support staff who are just here a couple days or so before registration starts. And so, this all has to be in place by August 8th. And it also burdens the CMG staff to deposit, to deliver these to the classrooms. This company will actually deliver them to the classrooms at the South campus and actually be on hand at the North campus, where we hand out the specific books to the students that go through registration line. So, there's a lot of service involved with the delivery assistance, and we were pleased actually to be able to recommend Follett. We don't have an exact dollar amount to compare it to for last year, but we do believe we saved over $10,000 in doing it this way, maybe closer to 14. So, we're pleased with it, we're going to proceed with it again next year, as long as the delivery works out. So, that's yet to, yet to come. So, we're asking you to approve Follett Incorporated for $104,771.54 for the English Department novels for 2017-18.
I just have a question. It's not so much about the bid, but in general, since a lot of students throw away their books at the end of the year.
The students go, keep these books.
I, I know, but a lot of them.
Oh, get pitched.
Get pitched. And I'm just wondering if we can collect the books and maybe donate them to some needy community somewhere.
We could. The only thing is that this process of giving them individual novels, there's a lot of highlighting that they do, and so there, they should be, if they're used. Now, some of them haven't been cracked open at all. And actually, some of these books, we found out through this process, there's a secondary kind of level of quality book that they put together, which is, they call mass producer mass, and it's, is not a high quality, so it's not meant to last too many years. But it's probably worth it maybe.
Yeah, it might be like a nice student project.
As we collect them lockers in the summer, we do collect all of them, and if they're in good shape and not overly used, we keep them on hand to give to kids who might have trouble.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the lowest responsible bid of $104,771.54 from Follett to provide novels in accordance with instructions and requirements provided in the May 31st, 2017 request for proposal for Community High School District 99 English Department novels.
Second. No, give it to Cheryl. Withdrawal. I withdraw my second.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupca.
Aye. Motion carries. Award of bid, copy paper.
Okay, the second of our annual bids for me tonight, this copy paper each year we do for the entire district, all four buildings, all recycled paper. We seen this year, a little increase in colored paper, a slight decrease in white copy paper. So, all in all, pretty good news. We really implemented the print management and our new printers this late in the year. So, I think a year from now, we're going to be back here with even lower numbers for copy paper for the district. So, that's my forecast. So, I think we'll even be saving more money in the future with that implementation this past year. So, moving forward, we, we're going to go ahead with this amount for this year, but I think we'll still have some left over, and then we'll have a reduction in our totals for next year. So, with that said, we're asking the board tonight to approve the copy, the award of copy paper to Copy Paper Group Incorporated, Uniontown, Ohio, for the 17-18 fiscal year in the amount of $59,540.68.
I'll double down on Jim's prediction that we'll go down, because it's year three of our one-to-one program, and that is the year traditionally where schools see a precipitous drop in the amount of paper that they use. So, you know, that would be the general trend in just about every school that's gone one-to-one. It's year three, you see the biggest drop. I'm going to take this opportunity, too, to thank these gentlemen for their good work. I mean, I, I wish I remember what it was in the, not this past Sunday's Tribune, but the previous Sunday's Tribune. I read something about the state legislature, it just mandated that we have to do something. I forget what it was, but it wasn't a huge thing, but I read it and I thought, okay, and how are we going to pay for that? And this is how we do it. I mean, every year, every year, we, you know, they're talking about tax freeze now. A dollar doesn't equal a dollar at the end of the year. And so, we keep that same buying power, but every year, we're being asked to do more, and how do we get it done? And we get it done by increased efficiencies and being creative in the way we do things, being creative in the way we, we ask people to give us prices for things. And so, I just, I don't want that to go, because we're talking thousands of dollars here that just got saved with this, with this work. So, it, it bears notice. With that, I'm going to make a motion for the Board of Education to approve an award of a contract to Copy Paper Group, Inc., Uniontown, Ohio, for a copier paper for fiscal year 2017-18 in the amount of $59,540.68. Second motion.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Cupca, say it to me. Thank you. Eric Cavacis? No, I'm sorry. Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Nancy Cupca.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Lease agreement, oh, excuse me, approval of Athletico contract.
Right, and this is, Athletico is, provide the trainers for both of our athletic programs. The directors of, athletic directors are very pleased with this company. We've had them for six years. They actually had kept their price flat for six years, so this year, they're asking for a 3% increase that they would hold solid for the next three years. So, it's a very reasonable request, and we're very pleased with their services, so I'd ask you to renew their contract.
Motion?
I make a motion for the Board of Education to approve the proposed Athletic Training Services Agreement with Athletico LTD, and direct administration execute any and all documents necessary to complete the proposed agreement.
Second.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Daniel Nicholas.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Nancy Cupca.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of the Title One plan?
Nope.
Oh, excuse me, lease agreement for new Chromebooks.
Turn this over to Mark.
Me again, and this is, as Superintendent Thiele just mentioned, that the, we finished the second full year of one-to-one, we're going into our third year. We have had a recommendation to change the model of the Chromebooks, even though Acer came up with a little heavier due model last year. There's not going to be support for it under Google all the way through the expected life of those machines, and there's constant updates and things that we need that support. So, they went and looked and found another machine that they feel is probably even more sturdy. So, appears the manufacturers are catching up with the need in the, in the schools, and actually, a reduced price. So, we're going to see how this works. It's about $267 a model compared to about $290. So, if this works out, we might be able to reduce the overall fee, or at least keep it from growing as inflation catches up with this.
Those are going to be my questions.
We anticipated these to go three years, and they're not making it. So, you know, we're having to keep condensing the next, like a level of kids, as kids, the seniors go off, we're taking the senior machines and the junior-level machines to make up the next year's senior machine. So, we are incurring the cost that we charge for that fee right now, but we are very hopeful that the newer models are going to last four years, and we will be able to reduce the number that we buy over time. So, and actually, with lower cost is a great thing to see. So, but it's a new model, and we'll see how it holds up. And we're, we've asked our tech support staff over the summer to do a lot of work trying to repair all of the used models to make sure that we have adequate numbers. We think we do have the right number for the start of school, so we, we think our plan will work right now. But we've asked the tech, they're putting on a couple new summer staff, either students or college-age students, to repair those models, so.
Why aren't we making the, why aren't they making the three years? Is it, is it just abuse of?
Well, I mean, a lot of cracked screens, which is the biggest cost, and that really isn't worth replacing on some models, because it's about half of the price, the original price, and after two years, you have to think of whether it's worth it.
Right.
And so, that's probably the biggest problem, but there's, you know, they're slacking around in a, in a bag, and they do have a case, but it's, you know.
Rarely in it.
It's, it's getting a lot of abuse. So, these, these heavier models do have a better reinforced screen, and they also are a little more rugged on the outside, so. There's missing keys, there's a lot of little things that happen, but the bigger things are the, are the screen, broken screens.
So, maybe this is going to help solve some of that durability issue?
Yeah, and we actually think that we need a change in the way that we work the deductible for this. The first time right now is zero deductible. We're going to recommend, I should have actually dropped this in the letter for you to see, but we're going to recommend using a $30 or a smaller deductible upfront on the first one, because what students do is they wait until there's like four or five breaks to the machine, and then they bring it in, and it's, it's already destroyed. So, we want to, we want to get there sooner, we want to get them, and we also need to recover a little bit more for those 720Ps, so.
So, maybe with the lower deductible, might.
What's, what's happening with the machines.
Lower deductible will encourage them to come sooner, before it's
Lower deductible will encourage them to come sooner before it's too late and get it fixed.
Yeah. You know, get a new machine, get a new screen. And we hope, at least we'll get a little more, some more dollars out of it, too, I think, just a little bit to make those machines, cover the cost of those machines.
Mark, if I'm a student, I broke my screen, and my Chromebook is no longer functional, functioning. I come, I come and I, I get a new Chromebook from the school.
New screen.
New screen. Even though you said it was too expensive.
If it's the first or second, first year or second year, but to start referring those to make them last four years, it wouldn't be worthwhile. And what happens is just like a lot, just to, because this was something I learned through this, is that just like some kids will drop their phone, cellphone, they'll have a crack, but it still works.
Yes.
They're going to get, they can, these things work with cracked screens up to a certain level. It's until something else. And actually, at that point, the techs are saying the machines are more damaged by them walking around with a broken screen. Internally, there's more damage to it. So it's, they don't have to bring it in. It'll still function for a while. And so we've got to encourage them to do that. But if we can get a better machine that doesn't let the screens crack, that's, that's ultimately where we have to end up.
But the responsibility, the cost to replace the machine is the schools, not the students?
Right. There are machines. And we, we actually have $20 going towards their fees each year, towards a self-insurance fund for us to rebuild these machines. So we're, you know, but we're seeing that we're getting it, we're cutting that pretty thin with the repairs we've had to make those first models.
But if there was a penalty, don't you think that that would lead to more responsibility in the care of the product?
And that's what we, that's why we think there's, there needs to be a penalty right off the bat instead of.
That's the deductible?
Yeah.
So the student would have to pay the deductible?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Right now, there's a zero deductible.
Right now, zero. Right. There's no penalty.
For the first.
For the first.
First. It does escalate after that, if it's a second or third time.
Okay. And if we did that, that might reduce the cost?
Might at least recover some money from them, and maybe they would feel a little more responsible that if they break that screen, they're going to at least pay that amount.
If mom and dad have to pay a fee, they're going to be more on top of that.
Again, the best way is avoid it. And we have enough of the 720Ps to get us through this year. So if we can get these other models to hold up, that'd be better for everybody, right?
Do you have a motion?
I'll move the Board of Education approve the modification of the existing master lease with Wintrust LLC by adding 1,350, 1,350 new Lenovo N23 Yoga Chromebooks to the lease and authorized administration to sign and execute all necessary documents related to this lease modification.
Second.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Daniel Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Approval of the Title I plan.
That's exactly what I presented earlier in the Superintendent's report.
I make a motion to approve the Title I plan as presented.
I'll second.
Daniel Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Nancy Cupka.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of the 2017 through 18th amended calendar.
This is the state-approved calendar, so you don't see late starts on this one, since the count is full attendance stays by state requirements.
I move the Board to approve the 2017-18 amended calendar as presented.
Second.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Daniel Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we have the approval for students to begin classes for the 2017-18 school year on Monday, starting September 11 at 9:20 a.m. and at 9:20 a.m. the day after parent-teacher conferences.
So moved.
Second.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Daniel Nicholas.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have the approval for the next board meeting, June 26, to be held entirely in closed session for the purpose of self-evaluation, practices, and procedures of professional ethics when meeting with a representative of statewide association of which the district is a member.
So moved.
Second.
Are we going too fast for you?
I'm good. Don Renner.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Daniel Nicholas.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we move on to the disciplinary action on student 1617.se.
5E.
Ie.
Five.
Five E. Oh, excuse me. I need new classes. Five E.
The Board is recommending that the, or the administration is recommending that the Board take action on this student.
So I'll move that we accept the report of the Board-appointed hearing officer in the matter of student 1617.se or 5E and expel student 1617.5E for the remainder of the 2016-17 school year and through the end of the 2017-18 school year, regretfully.
I'll second the motion.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Daniel Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I am removing Element K disciplinary action on student 1617.7 from the agenda for tonight. And we'll move on to L, action on personnel matter.
The administration is recommending this action as presented.
It's also regretful, but motion for the Board of Education to issue a notice to remedy to the tenured teacher named in the minutes of the closed session held earlier this evening.
I'll second that regretfully.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Daniel Nicholas.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to new business policy committee report, first reading.
Yep. We had a meeting earlier. Rick and Dan can help me out on this. There are several items that are up for first reading of these. And this list also includes the remaining policies that are District 99 only and do not fall under press policy. So we'll take any questions on any of these if they're there. If not, we'll take them between now and the second reading at the next board meeting.
I do have a question, and that is on the last policy, health eye and dental examinations, immunizations, and exclusion of students.
Yes.
And the very last paragraph, when we deal with homeless children, any homeless child shall be immediately admitted, even if the child or child's parents or guardian is unable to produce immunizations and health record normally required for enrollment. For this particular group, this is a very vulnerable population. And I'm not, I don't have a problem with the policy. My question is, is there anything we can do, working with the public health, the DuPage Health Department or something, to try to get that child immunized at no cost?
And we, I can speak to that. We do actually have nurses work with the DuPage County. Yeah. So we do every effort to help them. And this says, Jim.
Thank you.
Any other questions on any of the policies as presented?
Okay, hearing none. We, any, you can still contact either Dan or Rick until?
Right up until the next meeting.
The next meeting. Okay. Then we're moving on to the second reception of visitors, which is intended for audience members to address the Board on any topic pertaining to Community High School District 99. Is there anybody who wishes to address the Board? Hearing none, we'll move to communications and announcements, report on legislative education network of DuPage or Len Doc.
We did meet last, a couple weeks ago. I missed a portion of the meeting. You know, Hank, if you want to add to anything, but I mean, at this point, there's just so much pending legislation. It's almost impossible to report all of this to you. Until we have some more definitive action and consensus in Springfield, I don't know that I have a lot that I gained from the meeting, to be honest with you. It's really chaos at this point. And that's, I guess that's why the meeting that last curve was chaotic.
Yes. The theme continues to be continual mandates from the state of Illinois without any fiscal solvency or prediction thereof anytime soon.
It's driving me crazy. Driving me crazy.
Okay. Report on school association for special education in DuPage County or SACID.
Responsible.
I've attended three meetings in the last three weeks. And they are going through, because we are not only members of the Board, but we also are members of the governing Board of the Board. So they are going through some reorganization pains, not reorganization from administrative staff, but among the Board members. So I really don't have anything to report, other than we've been through a lot of meetings. And Julia got a lovely portrait of herself from, from them. 99 Education Foundation, Don, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay. IASB, Mike, anything?
No report.
Okay. Moving on, we have two upcoming board meetings. June 26 will be the special workshop meeting here at the ASC at 6 o'clock that will be in a closed session entirely. So there will be no audience time. And then July 18, we will have the regular business meeting here at 7:30 in the ASC. Anything else?
I do have one item.
Okay.
Which we're going to throw up on the screen here real quick, which is, last Friday, we switched email providers from Outlook to Gmail. So we just wanted to show the Board where you would access your email going forward. So it's all in one spot. And if you have any questions, you can reach out to myself. I'm pretty good with Google and can help you out. Or I can talk to our talented tech staff.
When I tried logging in today, it directed me to my personal Google Gmail account. So...
I can show you how to switch that. So Tony, you going to pull that up?
While you're pulling that up, I just want to make a correction. The July regular business meeting is July 17, not at the 18 at 7:30 here. Go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, if you wanted to show them where it is that, so if you just go to, you can go directly to gmail.com and log in with your school account. You got to log out, though, Tony.
Sure.
Oh, pause real quick. Right here, Don, is where you would see your two accounts, and you can switch between the two of them. You click on your picture, and you could bounce between the two accounts. So go ahead and sign out there, Tony. So when you go to Gmail, you're going to get this kind of a screen, or it might ask you for your username first. Okay? Your username is your full email address at csd99.org. Once you enter that, it'll ask you to enter your password, and you're in. Now, all of your email and documents, Google documents, will all be accessible from that same login, where before your email was in Outlook and your mail was in, or your, your email was in Outlook and your documents were in, in Google. Now it's all one unified system.
I was just saying, actually, too, if you have multiple email addresses, they'll all pop up now when you try to go in, and you can just access whatever.
Yeah. Tony, if you hit the downward arrow next to your name, as you add accounts to your computer, you'll start to see other accounts populate there, and you can swap between them. Okay? So if you have any problems logging in, I can help, Julie can help, the tech staff can help, any of us can get you in there. Okay? That's all I had.
Okay. We are going to have a motion to return to closed session.
The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the district or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity.
Thank you. We need a second.
Second him.
Thank you. Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Daniel Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye. Motion carried. We'll be, the Board will be retiring to closed session and...
Then we'll come back out, we'll come back here to...
Yeah, but they, but we will not be taking any action, any action after that. I'm sorry, everybody was talking to me. We will not be taking any action after that. So, goodnight.